All right, time being six o'clock, tonight being November 5th, 2018. The Board of Selectmen's, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Is anyone in the board in the meeting?
I might, but I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Free can.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We have on the agenda, 6:00 PM call to order, 6:00 PM Board of Health Variants for 7 Ashley Ave., 6:00 PM discuss vote with Rayman Levy, Churchill Banks regarding host community agreement for retail medical marijuana sales with Liberty Compassion, Inc. Board of Health, discuss recycling options. Board of Health, discuss tobacco vaping grant requirements. Board of Health, discuss opioid grant with Health Agent Derek Macedo. Personnel Board has appointed Derek Macedo as public records clerk, Board of Health, effective November 5th, 2018. Discuss position on soil board clerk. Approve retroactive change of status report for members of the town hall and library union, highway union, single operators union, and firefighters union, effective July 1st, 2018. See attached sheet for a complete list of names. Sign change of status form for Alexandra Galls, effective July 1st, 2018. Accept letter of resignation for Joseph Cowing as reserve police officer and sign change of status form, effective November 1st, 2018. Board of Selectmen, consent agenda. Adopt other post-employment benefits. Oped declaration of trust submitted by the treasurer, Joseph Thomas. Approve signed schedule for new 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe and 2018 Dodge Durango Cruze lease. Discuss approve all snowplow contracts for 2018, 19 snow and ice seasons. See attached list for names of snowplow drivers. Award fire hydrant removal and replacement at fire station number two project of JRD, Inc., submitted by town administrator David Demarche. Discuss town office and transfer station hours for 2018 holiday season. Discuss vote on Department of Conservation's intent to purchase 6.6 and 24.7 acres of land abutting the Free Town State Forest. See memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and Department of Fire Services regarding use of hazardous materials response teams, submitted by fire chief Gary Sylvia. Sign agreement with the environmental partners group regarding a study for a sonnet sewer extension. Sign agreement with F&amp;S Engineering for additional services at Highway Department. Sign special town election warrant, as submitted by Jacqueline Brown, town clerk. Approve agreement between the Free Town and Lakeville for the use of Lakeville Animal Shelter. Approve with Board of Selectmen's minutes for meetings of October 15th and October 20th, 2018. Update on one-call citizens notification system. Town administrators report. Acknowledge the receipt of Excel application for operation. New business, dates of upcoming Board of Selectmen's meetings. Monday, November 5th, Monday, November 19th, Monday, December 3rd, Monday, December 17th. Executive session, Mass. General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of a public body, and the chair so declares Excel Recycling LLC versus the town of Free Town. And then listed is the snowplow contracts and the retroactive change of uniforms as submitted by the agenda. So, with that being said, first thing is the Board of Health Variants for 7 Ashley Ave.
Kevin.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Bill Gottwald. Plan's right there on the engineer.
There's no green cards because there's no butters.
Right, we're only asking, we're asking for one waiver here, which is a five to four foot, a one-foot reduction in water, give it from five feet to four feet. It's a sand, it was two-minute per. It's gonna be a pump, but the one foot will just, you know, alleviate the aesthetically look a little bit better when that guy. We hit water at, I think, about nine feet, but we saw some rust stains at five feet, so that's what we held for the design of the system. So, four feet above, then the system is about a foot of height, and then it will need some cover over.
So, still have slightly raised system, it just won't be as high?
Right, and he has a pretty good-sized backyard, it will probably be eight to 10 inches above ground, and it can kind of be faded in, whereas if we have the five-foot, now it would be almost two feet, and then it would not look so great.
Does the board have any questions?
You didn't hit standing water until nine feet, but you just saw evidence of water at.
That's right. Standing water at nine feet, and, you know, it's all sand, you don't really see mottling per se in sand, but there was rust, people argue both ways in that, but we, conservative, we held it at the five feet.
All set.
Did you do sieve analysis?
We did a perk here.
So, no, didn't do a sieve of the soils?
No, it's very good sand, I mean, I don't remember, I mean, we did 25 gallons in pre-soak, maybe, I don't remember how long, about five to eight minutes or something like that.
Seems like everything that you have here, the perk test is right here, if you want to take a look at it.
Okay.
All right, does the board have, well, Kevin, you're up.
I didn't know what you were.
Get her up, Kevin.
Oh, Derek, one of my sins, I'm so sorry.
Derek.
One of those days.
I didn't have an option.
There's a lot of people using your names lately. Anyway.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
No.
A lot of aliases.
Yes, I'll make a motion, allow the variance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a D restriction on the number of bedrooms on the system or anything?
Not, not that I see.
Uh, no.
Not that I see.
I mean, it's existing three-bedroom house, it.
Just put the covers on again.
Yeah, if they have to, they'll have to come back.
Yeah, I thought it was a state statute, wouldn't you go for, has been the interest.
All set?
I'm all set.
All set.
You're all set.
All right, thank you.
All right, 6:00 PM, discuss, would you all sit with the?
Yes.
6:00 PM, discuss vote, Ray Levy, Churchill Banks, regarding host community agreement for retail medical marijuana sales with Liberty Compassion.
Members of, yeah, I'm Ray Levy, members of the board, we've been here a few times before to discuss getting permission to make 170 South Main Street into a retail facility for marijuana, and, as a dispensary. And we had, or we have, I should say, a host community agreement that precludes that, and we asked for guidance on whether we should amend that agreement or create a new one, and it was brought back to us from the town manager and your council that we should create a new one, which we did, we drafted it, sent it in, and got some comments back on it, and changed it and sent it back, and all parties agreed to the form of the form, not necessarily permission for it, which is now in front of you for acceptance. Rich Bakari is here, he's my boss, he's Churchill and Banks. Vince Giordano's here, Liberty Compassion, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So, yeah, I think the last few times we were.
Just the evening.
Oh, Richard Bakari.
And position.
Well, Churchill and Banks, President of Churchill and Banks. So, last few times we were here, we chatted, and I think the direction that we took was, you know, if this was even something that you wanted to consider, you needed to understand what that meant, what the host community agreement would look like, and as Ray said, we went back and forth with your council, our council, the town manager, and we asked to be put on the agenda so we could have the discussion with you guys, and we're here. Basically, the terms of the agreement would be a 3% of the gross revenue would be paid to the town with a minimum of $50,000 payment annually. In addition to that, this is based off of the host community here, we have a West Springfield, an additional $15,000 a year for abuse prevention contribution, which could be used in West Springfield for kind of opiate abuse stuff, or medical marijuana, marijuana, you know, used in prevention, that type of stuff. So, that's what's in front of you tonight, and we're here to just discuss it, because any questions, happy to talk about.
Open up to the board for questions.
I'm good, but I've read, and I don't have any issues. We already discussed this a number of times, so I don't have any other issues.
I don't have, I don't have a question per se, right now.
Okay.
I have a question, it's a question I asked right from the beginning. I know that you submitted for P MUD, mixed-use development, and you also want to do this at that site.
Right.
And my concern was, you know, those sites were specifically picked, when we went through zoning, to be away from residential areas. What is your closest location to where you are proposing for P MUD? Now, I don't know if you're gonna go through with P MUD, but I know you did make a submission to the planning board.
Right.
And we have it on file with the planning.
Yeah, I mean, our intention is to try to build that P MUD in some way, shape, or form, may not be exactly as it's outlined, it's a big site, it's a 450-acre site, so it's tough to kind of master plan that, kind of, you know, without a crystal ball to see exactly what will work, but we certainly do want to pursue residential, we know that the train stop is gonna be coming across South Main Street at some point, hopefully 2022, I believe is what the date is, so we're certainly not trying to not do the P MUD, we think that that will be important, especially as the train becomes a reality. And we don't believe that there's really any negative impact that this will have with those, with that P MUD or residential use, I mean, there's nothing in the, in the state law that precludes you from having a medical or a recreational dispensary within a certain distance from residential, it only speaks to schools, K through 12. So, you know, we're meeting the rules of the state at this point, I certainly understand your concern. I think part of the, you know, right now, that building is there, it's available standing alone. That's not to say that in the future, as the, as the building gets, as the site gets developed, that that might not move or get changed from one location to another, I mean, we're just using what's on the site right now. But, you know, I don't think that there's any issue per se that within 500 feet of that building that there were residential units, that's my opinion, but, you know, if there's a C V S down the street from a house or within a couple hundred feet, it's really no different than that, it's a lot more benign of a product that we'd be selling. So, you know that there's kind of a stigma sometimes associated with this because it's new, but in our opinion, the types of people that are getting relief from this, and if I could speak to that.
Yeah, so, my name's Vince Giordano, I'm president of Liberty, and I can tell you that one of the things, particularly with medical marijuana, like one statistic that we see all the time, is that the age group of the people who come in for treatments such as relief from chemotherapy or pain management as an alternative to other more difficult and addictive type of drugs, that the age group is, the fast-growing age group is over 45, but it's ideally between 60 and 75 years old. And these are people who are, you know, seeking treatment, seeking an alternative to some of the medications that they have, and they couldn't find it, and there's medical and research evidence that it works, and it works well.
Truthfully, I'm not against the medical marijuana, it is zoned in town, my objection is, and who's, I've stated this since the beginning, is how close it is to residential, residential neighborhoods. I know, you say it can go next to pretty much anything, but I think there is a regulation that it can't be so many feet from schools, there's still.
Yeah, yeah, 500.
500 feet from schools. So, and even, so even that shows that, yeah, it can go, Massachusetts voted to allow, and it should be allowed, and in my opinion, medical marijuana has a place, but I also, in my personal opinion, don't believe it should be next to residential, I think it should be set aside. And that's the problem, if you look at what the zoning board put it, the board only put it in the industrial areas, non-residential areas, it didn't put it in general, where it can go anywhere in town, it didn't put it into business, it put it into specifically non-residential areas.
Well, I mean, maybe this is a happy medium, right now, it is an industrial area, there's no residents around.
And if you told me, if you didn't submit that P MUD, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, but when I see the P MUD plan, and I actually got it brought today because from planning, I had the planning bring it for us, when I look at the P MUD, you're less than 500 feet from residential, you're actually closer probably to around 300 feet, using the existing building, which I believe is what you stayed and wanted to use.
Yeah, right, right.
And because of the building itself, and that, the whole area, for me, as a businessperson, but also as, looking at how the elements, the logistics of it work, it's just, it's a good place, because it's off the road, it's not like a right on the road, there's easy access on and off.
But you have, how many acres there?
We have 425 acres. Right. But the front, the P MUD, the only place that this would be viable would be in the front, obviously.
But I'm just saying, you designed that, knowing, I mean, you've been here, eight months ago, you came here for the first time, when you designed that, you submitted that, you kind of put it, I know, you want that stuff close to the street as possible, you don't want it back.
The reason that you have a P MUD is so that it's close, the transitory design's close to the train station, so we spent, I don't know, were you part of that study? We spent probably three years dealing with the town to figure out what the best use of Long South Main Street would be, and we created this overlay zone that would be allowed within so many feet of South Main Street.
Right.
So, I didn't pick, I mean, that's a practical place for it to be. What I was thinking is potentially.
And I agree with you, residential portion, you want it close to, you don't want it back with the way houses, you want it as close to the train station, you want it closest to the road as possible.
Right.
I don't necessarily know if you need that there, and that's the only reason I'm having this discussion.
So, my thought is, what if we agreed that if, you know, to a certain distance from residential that it needs to be, and that we could work either the plan around moving the residential further back from, or further distance away from the existing building, or if we can't, we can move the dispensary at such time that we're actually have residents in there, and you're talking years away from this actually happening, you know, you're still gonna do all the site work, and build buildings, and get more approvals, it's easily three, four, or five years away, that at that time, we would have to relocate the dispensary somewhere on-site, but further away from the residential area. I think that's something I'm certainly open to, we just feel like, for now, the building's there, it could be used, it could be utilized, it could serve the purpose for us, for the town, and for patients, so, you know, if that was a condition that you thought was, that you needed, because you weren't comfortable with it being so close to potential future residential, I'm willing to put something like that in as a condition.
So, I'm opposite of Robbie, I think that the location is fine, although I am wary about the residential being a little close, but you said you could work on that. I like it up front because it's easy, it's visible from the road.
Sure.
Should there be any problems, it's not hidden away, way in the backs, and we're, you know, we're police officers and such, can't see it. I'm opposed to the whole thing overall, I think you've known that from the very beginning, I've tried to be very open-minded about it, I can't. Your statistics that you tell me, that's great, but they're one-sided, I could probably sit here and look up online about statistics that will shoot your statistics down, so there's no, to me, that's a moot point. Secondly, we have two, we already have a host community agreement with another facility, and within both host community agreements, and not with this board, but with prior boards, we made it very clear that we didn't want to do any selling, retail, medical, or recreational marijuana, that was very clear from the very beginning. Had we had known that this was gonna change, we probably wouldn't have gotten into a host community agreement. I think that we have two agreements right now, we don't know where this is gonna land us, we don't know, we don't know what the outlook is for it, so we don't know what the potential problems, and maybe there aren't gonna be any potential problems, but I think it's still, it's still an area that was still learning and growing from, no pun intended, also, you have to remember that the town didn't vote down this, so.
Recreational.
Right, recreational, retail.
Yeah, so to be clear, this is, this is.
I understand, I understand, so, that's my guess.
Mind you, the situation is, this is a legal operation, and the point that was made is, if it was a C V S or a pharmacy, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And, you know, my own view is, I see, you know, with relation to medical marijuana, whether or not it's actual marijuana or subderivative of, there's a lot to say that it is being seen, and it's being used for treatment to reduce pain, and I just see it as a, another commercial distributor of drug, and it's being, going to be regulated as much as it can be. I mean, I, I don't have any opposition to it, that's my view. I don't see it as, you know, a retail marijuana situation for recreational use at all. A lot of the, my understanding from what the presentation's been in the past, a lot of it is not gonna be marijuana as we know it, it's gonna be the derivatives.
Right.
Which, which, by the FDA approved just recently, and medication that is cannabis base for various neurological disorders.
T M Ds.
Nope, this is actually marijuana.
T U Cs.
THC for relief of muscular disorders, particularly a very distinct version of M S. So, you know, whether the age groups, or something like that, the medical efficacy is, is very documented in that way, not to the degree where there's other, other medications, because it haven't done research in the U.S., but outside of the U.S., there's been quite a bit of research on it.
So, I think you've heard the, some of the board's opinions, I want to echo Lisa's concern also about, we did this a year ago, 18 months ago now, when you first came in for a grow facility, signed an HCA, host community agreement saying you wouldn't do a dispensary, and then, you know, a year later, you came in and asked for a dispensary, and that was six months ago. Yes, I wanted to see, because I want to see how you get around the HCA, demonstrated that you got around the HCA, I understand that. But to echo Lisa's point again, when you originally came in, that was kind of something we harped on, and wanted to make sure that was in there, is, you know, wasn't, we were gonna do a grow facility, it was contained, wasn't gonna be sales, and then you came in, and I even made the comments kind of like a bait and switch, it's not, I mean, you laid out a case why you don't want it, you why, I think it's Carlton, is that where you have the facility?
Clinton.
Clinton, is now, and you're gonna distribute the other way, but, so, that's a concern I still have.
To be clear, you still plan on going, building a cultivation facility.
My chief concern now, though, is your proximity to residential space, and how close you're gonna be to residential space. And yes, it's similar to everything else in pharmacies, but it's not really, it's still federally illegal, so there is still a component of, and you are required to get this board's, this board's permission, and have a letter of non-opposition for C V S or Walmart, you're not, rural region not required to have this board sign. So, there is a distinction.
I have a question, if you want me to ask it. So, you're concerned about it being close to residential, is it here specifically for the, you know, I've been with Liberty now, with running Liberty for about eight months, so some of the stuff, discussions that happened was a little bit before my time, but the, the issue of it being close to residential, is it, can I just elaborate your concern a little bit, just so I understand it?
As presented right now, with the P MUD presentation, I'm concerned how close it is to residential, I am not against the rest of the whole thing, my concern, and I think when we started this off, is how close it is to residential.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to, I just was trying to understand it, that's all, whether or not it was, was it because of the people that were living there, was community.
If we didn't, there's nobody living there now, it's all proposed. If we did that, if the P MUD didn't exist, that proposal didn't exist, I wouldn't be having this conversation, because right now, it's an empty space, it's an abandoned building, it's been there for, what, 10 years, abandoned, probably more than that, 20 years ago.
Yeah.
I used to have here.
It's a really nice location, right?
But, that's why, that's why we're having this discussion.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'd be willing to say, if there's, you know, if you don't want it to be within that P MUD district, or within 600 feet of housing within that P MUD district, at the time that we do, if we ever do get to that point, because the site is an industrial site, the whole thing could be industrial, I mean, we might find a tenant that comes in and says, look, we need this much space, and the P MUD goes out the window, and we just have this building left in the front.
Absolutely right.
So, I'd hate to kind of not do the deal that's in front of us, that's an existing building, that will create revenue for the town, for myself, and, and a place where people could get, get their medication, for a plan that's basically been created through a lot of master planning through the town, and, you know, for future what's gonna happen. But if we want to, if you want to put a condition that it can't be within so many feet of housing, we could live with that, we could figure out a way to do that, we could move, you know, that building doesn't need to be there, we're only using this building because it's available, so if we need to move the building to the far-left corner, and the residential becomes pushed further back, again, we got 400 acres, we can move things around.
Right.
I'd be willing to do that, I have no problem with that, and I expect, I appreciate your, you know, your consideration.
That was a little bit of that, you want your cake and you eat too, you want, you show the plan, you show the existing building, but you show another building on top of it, and all the, and then you're also at the same time trying to.
It's hard to, it's hard to plant 400 acres in, in the crystal ball, I mean, it is, you know, this is not easy things to do, I mean, you know, we came to the town 20 years ago and got Stop &amp; Shop, you know, approved, and, and we thought that we'd be building the rest of this business park out right behind it, and we've been sitting on that property for a long time, so, you know, and we put a lot of effort into it, you know, we helped lobby to get the, the new off-ramp, and, you know, we've been, I think, a good partner for the town throughout that process, and you guys have always been good to work with, and this is fine to have this conversation, now, we appreciate the, the time that you've even given us, because you did say off the bat that you didn't want to have a dispensary. I will say that times change, and, you know, since that time that we originally got the first host community agreement, recreational wasn't even allowed in the state, and that's then passed, and, so, a lot's happened, and we just see it as an opportunity, again, we can't force you, we can't, like you said, we have to come here, we need, you know, your approval, I totally respect your opinion, one way or the other, we think it's, we think it's a net benefit for everybody, we don't see the downside, and if there's a way that we could put conditions on, on the approval that would make you feel more comfortable, I'm open to anything you have.
I definitely think there's a downside, and I think that the people in a sonnet right now are under a lot of stress over there, and I think we're just adding one more thing to them right now, that I just, I can't go along with.
So, I see it's no different than with a drugstore, you know, I mean, really, when you think of the crisis in opioids, and the amount of opioids that are gonna be in a drugstore, and then you're, you're opposing this, which is, I mean, I'm not gonna say that there's no problems with it, but the likelihood of it being the problems that you have in a normal, a normal drugstore, that's my.
Yeah, but I, I hear you, Charlie, but a normal drugstore wouldn't put $15,000 in for prevention and for.
You should ask them for it. They deserve to owe you a lot more.
We don't have any drugstores in town. We don't have any in town, so.
It should be your first one.
I'll remember that, too, but we don't have any.
To the point, maybe, maybe when we, these drug pharmaceutical houses are pushing these drugs and so forth, and using, should be charged with paying for opioid addiction.
Not to interrupt you, but the funny part is, the host community agreement really only was borne by the casino who's trying to locate Massachusetts, so then when medical marijuana became introduced, the few lobbyists that were running around would say, okay, we'll go to every town and give them a host community agreement, because you can tax these guys in addition, because we're doing that for the casino. So, now, every town gives you this host community, it's really just an extra burden on, on the business and on the consumer, because it's just gonna get passed through to them, but it's accepted, it's accepted throughout.
It also works as a pilot, because you're a medical facility, you're tax exempt from, your taxes come from sales taxes, your taxes come from certain things, where.
Yeah, but in this, it says that we pay the real estate taxes and.
I understand, but that's what, it basically, it's a pilot, it's payment in lieu of taxes, so.
It also protects the town.
It protects the town, gives us a bite of the apple, because it is a new thing. In 20 years, and we'll all be the judge and say, that should have, that was no big deal, or, oh my God, we can't believe we did that, we fell for this, time will tell. All right, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll, well, I'll make a motion as we enter into the agreement. Your concern about distance from potential residential being taken into consideration, you're willing to make that adjustment?
Yes.
Before we go any further, we only have a vote, a motion at this point, hold on a second. Would you be better off just getting a number, or would you be better off looking, looking at your design, figuring out what you want to put in, come back with a plan? That's a tactical decision you need to make.
You mean, coming up with a, a distance?
Somewhere.
We need to keep the residential away from the building.
Yes.
I think we could come, I mean, I'm fine with 500 feet, I mean, I don't think I need, we've got enough land that we can figure out how to squeeze everything in, 500 feet, or we'd have to, or we'd have to remove the dispensary if we wanted to do that, which is, which is something that, you know, may be worthwhile at that point, you know, who knows? So, I'm fine with it, with the distance, if you are, if, you know.
You're setting it further back.
No, no, it would stay where it is now.
Yep.
But we wouldn't put residential within 500 feet of the building, or if we wanted to put it, put residential where that building is, we'd have to relocate it to another part of the site, but it could be, you know, no further back than, you know, 1,000 feet from the road, or something like that, because I know that's a concern that you have.
I'll second the motion with discussion. I'll second the motion with discussion. Here's my discussion. Um, you know my concerns. I think more realistic number for me would be close to a thousand feet, but I kinda like what you just said a second ago, that if it's, you wouldn't be mind removing that if, if, if you went to PMUD.
Right, if you go to the PMUD, and, and you can't figure out a way to get those buildings more than, let's call it a thousand, cause that's the number that you like, a thousand feet away, then we'd have to remove the dispensary. But at, at no point could the dispenser be within a thousand feet of residents within the PMUD district that, on our site, cause I can't control if somebody builds a house or moves across the street on, you know.
Thousand feet.
I, I think that's still a long way, but.
What's the deal with moving across the street?
Just, it's the mini storage and the, the sewmill, which is not happening right now.
That's where the station is.
And that's where, if they ever do a station, it'll be back there.
Do you guys have another meeting?
Do you have to bring it back to the, sorry, back to the planning board?
This board doesn't have to bring it back to the planning board, if they make any alterations to that plan, that's the maximum bill though, for MIPA, so if they make any alterations more than that, they have to go back to MIPA study, less than that, they can, because they make MIPA on that.
Well, I was gonna ask, do you guys have another meeting in, in November?
We do.
We live here.
No, I didn't know if there was another, if you just had it in December.
No, no, we meet every, first and third, first and third, and Monday, and the month.
The fifth.
Today's the fifth.
Oh, sorry. Look, see that, the nineteenth. It's been a bad day.
All right, a motion made in second, unless you wanna do, add anything else, we'll call a motion. Motion made in second, and I'd like to make an amendment to state that, um, PMUD, the dispensary can't be located any closer to one thousand feet to the, to a residence, and that if it has to be relocated within a thousand feet of residence, it'll be removed from the property. And that's for the PMUD.
I mean, a thousand feet, I see it's being quite drastic, but I think that we're talking hypotheticals here, hypothetical residential with a perm, well, not permit, but a firm building here, of, of business, of building. So I mean, if you wanna go with a thousand feet for now, if you're willing to, I have no objection.
I'm looking for a second to the amendment.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion made in second to amend the original motion to a thousand feet, and to remove if, uh, can't get a thousand feet. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 On the, call, call the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion, now reading to approve with a thousand feet and removal if they can't get the thousand feet? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No. The motion carries.
That's a condition that will be.
That'll be a condition, and I'd like to see a de restriction, please.
Okay, we could, we could amend the host community agreement to reflect that.
It won't be, obviously you'll have to reflect that in the host community agreement, and then go through council, and once it meets our recommend, our requirements, then we'll sign the.
Okay.
Letter of non-op.
Thank you, and I'll try to get a plan, so that you guys can see how that might look.
Absolutely.
Cause it, like I said, the PMUD is really just a, uh, current configuration, but that can get moved around, so we can, we can discuss that, so that you guys are comfortable with it, and if we have to move it, we will move it.
Absolutely, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Moving on, Board of Health.
On recycling, I mailed these to you guys this morning, I apologize if you got it earlier, but I was still kinda working on it a little bit. It was nice to get some different options as far as recycling, this is what I've been able to come up with to this point. Fortunately, it's, it's kinda what we got for options at this point. Do you have any questions? Be glad to answer.
I, I have a question, it's kind of, um, probably more on the whole, how we, where we stand out there in relation to the contract with Republic, we haven't extended it, correct?
At this point, we haven't done anything with it.
Okay, and, um, they are.
Given notice of intent.
We've given them notice of intent.
Uh, to not renew.
To not renew.
To not renew. Okay, um.
Right before my.
We have until, what?
The, you're right, we currently run until June thirtieth under the contract.
Oh, yeah. Seeing the four quotes here, my, my way of thinking is self-evident that number one, Republic, is the firmest we're gonna get, because the others are quite drastic, well, number two has a lower price, but with a drastic, uh, change, if we can't meet that standard of ten percent contamination.
Number two is more of just FYI for a number, like that, that one's really not much of an option for us in the short term. Three, three and four could be more options in the short term.
When you say more options?
That's something that could happen now.
So if we did number three, um, it would cost fifty-six thousand dollars, um, we would have, remember, it's a company based in a sonnet, so we'd be getting some revenue back from them, um, and it would be, so Republic would still get rid of it?
Republic would pick it up.
Pick it up, and then waste stream recycling would get rid of it.
Right, it would, it would basically end up getting merged in with, they, they currently service Fall River, so it would actually be going to Fall River.
Which would.
Getting merged in with Fall River's load.
Which would give us approximately six months to really negotiate, um, anything, give us time to negotiate terms with Republic. I just saw the Borges one today, so I have no idea. What is, do you wanna talk about that one?
We met with him very late, uh, I think it may have even been on late Thursday or early Friday, um, and the, the biggest difference with him is he doesn't have a transfer station per se, so Republic couldn't bring it to him, and then he would get rid of it. That's where I think, and we had sent a question over legal, I'm not sure how much of an option that really is.
Okay.
How do they transport it right now, they transport it right in the truck, or do they bring it back and offload it into containers and transport in containers, or how does that?
Republic, right now they're, they pick up, they're bringing it back to their location into a, into containers, and they're moving it from there.
When Republic was, we still had Week Year, how were they transporting to Week Year? Were they transporting in bulk, or were they transporting each truck at the end of the day, took a ride to Week Year?
I believe, I, I, I can get definitely answered, I believe that each truck was going to Week Year.
Really?
I believe.
Okay.
Also, we talked about doing some other things with Republic, if we had to, um, adding some stuff in there, but that stuff.
That would be?
If we decided to go that way.
So, if we were to go with Republic for a two-year extension, would the, the one hundred dollar per ton would be for the two-year extension, correct?
That would, that was gonna be a two-year extension, yes.
And the two-year extension on regular trash would be consistent with what we agreed on, what the board.
It would, it would've been with what was in the negotiated contract three years ago, the, the two built in, the extension built in.
Does Republic have any, or are there any options if things should miraculously, miraculously change in the next two years?
That's stuff that we would have to try to discuss with them. In the short term, like, I would say over the next six months, probably not, but moving forward for, for those other two years, um, is something that might be able to get talked about.
I know in the recycling stream, like recycling business, that they're trying to build domestic recycling plants, because we relied so much on China, that now that, with the China SOW program, and them not taking it in, there's an opportunity, with these numbers, I mean, we went from thirty dollars a ton, to the best number around here is a hundred dollars a ton, and, so there is a push, there is, people see there's an economic benefit to building domestic recycling facilities. So I, I don't think, in two years, I don't really know if we're gonna have the same problem, it was spending a hundred dollars a ton, and it's back down to forty, fifty dollars a ton, you know.
I don't think we're gonna see it turn around in six months, though.
No, but you may have a clearer picture in six months of what's gonna happen.
And, and that's a problem with, that we're facing, is it's, the market is so wonky right now that we can't, and you can normally say, well, it's bad right, like gas prices, you can say it's bad right now, but we know probably in six months it's gonna go down. We have, it could get worse.
Correct.
We just, we really have no idea.
We didn't know this was coming six months ago.
Absolutely not.
We were going along, and everybody was happy. A policy change, an economic policy changes somewhere in the world, and this is what happened, so.
The, this was more for FYI for you guys, we don't necessarily need to make a decision tonight, but we do need to probably make one soon.
Okay.
Okay, so probably by the first, um, meeting in December, if you guys mull this over and think about it, have any other questions, we'll probably do it then.
Okay. If anything comes up between now and then, I'll make sure you guys know about it.
The first of December, we, I, I had to say, Republic would like us to give them an answer.
Absolutely.
So I would, I would hope that we could.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, we, so, just so you, just so you know, Derek, is that your name?
Derek.
Yeah, for now, um, and the town administrator and myself did meet and go over some of this stuff, and, um, you know, we were still waiting for numbers from, um, Mr. Borges, so we just got those, so it'll take time to look at that too. We wanted to give him an opportunity.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You got some other stuff, Derek?
I do. I got information on two grants, um, I'll start with the tobacco grant. This grant, we're already signed up on, um, so I just wanted to give you guys some information about it. It's called the MTCP Grant Massachusetts Tobacco Control Program. It's a grant that we are, and it's us, New Bedford, Acushnet, Dartmouth, Marion, Rochester, and Fairhaven. Um, and we're basically trying to do like a regional approach to tobacco control, tobacco regulations, um, that's probably the biggest thing that we're trying to get out of this grant, is uniform regulations, uniform coverage, um, we're not gonna receive money from the grant, we are gonna receive services, uh, there's gonna be a full-time tobacco inspector that's gonna be covering the whole region, uh, there's also gonna be compliance checks for the whole region, which is huge, uh, compliance checks, or, that, those are the ones where they have the underage go out, try to buy cigarettes, those are very expensive inspections to conduct, there's a lot of training for the youths, we're gonna get that as part of this grant. There's a big focus on e-cigarettes as part of the new policy that we're coming up with, trying to tie up that loose end. The grant at start is good for four years, but we have two, three-year extensions on it, so we could be looking at a ten-year grant, which would be awesome. The biggest thing that I have to bring up with this grant, it's, it's called TB-21, so the state has gone to twenty-one as the legal age to purchase e-cigarettes, tobacco products, as of December thirtieth of this year. There is however a loophole, that if we as Freetown do not adopt to take, to be part of TB-21, if you're eighteen, nineteen, or twenty, on December thirtieth, you can still purchase. So the biggest thing that we have to do is just close that loophole, all we have to do is both to say that in Freetown, the legal age to purchase is now twenty-one, not eighteen. It's gonna be twenty-one regardless, the state's making that as of December thirtieth, but if, let's say, uh, New Bedford does do TB-21, Freetown did not, the inspector, when they're out inspecting, would know twenty-one is the smoking age, when they come to Freetown, now, well, all right, now it's eighteen, so now when you card that guy, he's nineteen, but when did he turn nineteen? It eliminates all those questions and that little muddy area, it's just, if you're twenty-one, you can purchase, if you're not, you can't. Really, that's about it, um, once the regulations are completely done, I'm gonna bring that back to the board to just adopt the regulations as a whole, um, we really could use a, a revamp on our regs for tobacco, this would be the best way of doing it. So either by the next meeting, or maybe the first December meeting, I'm gonna present that we close that loophole, that we adopt the TB-21, and that's really about it. Um, I don't know if you got any questions about the grant?
I know.
On the staggering, would we do it as a regulation, or would it have to be a town meeting, uh, vote?
I think we just do that report, I don't think it needs to be a town meeting.
I would say it's a regulation.
Yeah. All right.
Do you have a motion?
What do you wanna motion for to?
To, um, approve the age at twenty-one.
Are we doing that tonight, or are we doing the?
I think I have to present it differently.
We have to do a public hearing, but we have to do a hearing for that, so I just wanted me to.
Motion to, go ahead with the public hearing, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, the next grant, uh, we are not signed up for yet, um, at this point, I've just been getting information about it, it is, it's technically two grants of one, it is the Massachusetts Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative, MOPC for short, and the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative, SAVC. Basically, it's opioid prevention grants, um, let's see, this one I'm still learning, so I apologize, I'm reading word for word here. Um, the target of the grant, prevent misuse and abuse of opioids, prevent, reduce unintentional deaths and non-fatal hospital events associated with opioid poisonings, delay the use of alcohol and other drugs amongst youths, reduce the current use of alcohol and other drugs amongst youths, and increase the number and capacity of municipalities across the Commonwealth. It, it's, it's a, it's another good collaborative grant, um, learning a lot more about it, but I, I worked very little with it when I was in New Bedford, um, there's a lot of outreach that goes in with this one. I've already spoken to Chief Abbott about this, I've already spoken to Mr. Maderas with the, uh, school department about this, this grant, they like as many different pieces as they can get to wanna really be part of it, makes getting the information out much easier. A lot of outreach with this grant, um, that's really what we get out of it, is they're, they're in the street, they're hitting the streets, getting the word out, um, apparently, Freetown's numbers, when you look at state numbers, we're, we're pretty up there for, for opioid abuse, opioid overdoses, um, we're at sixty-five point eight per one thousand residents, which is double the state rate. So, and we're small, you don't hear about it as much, but we're, we're actually pretty prevalent with opioid abuse. So they had been targeting Freetown to try to get, to be part of this grant for a little bit now, and obviously with New Bedford running it, made it easier to just tap into me to get ahold of me. So I've met about getting to be part of this, uh, let's see who's with it, uh, Dartmouth, Fairhaven, Acushnet, uh, New Bedford, the Tri-Town, and Wareham, are all part of this grant currently. I received the MOU, which we can get over the legal to have them take a look at it before we sign anything, but I just wanted to get that information, see, uh, do you guys think about that?
Y'all make a motion forward with it. I'll second that.
It's a no-brainer, all in favor?
Curious, um, do you know where they get the numbers from, are they doing it from anyone's calls, are they, are they doing it from residences?
Uh, opioid overdose data was obtained from the Mass Department of Public Health, incident rates were determined using ACS five-year population estimates from, from Census Bureau. Yeah.
Thought maybe all those mutual aid calls were doing us some good?
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Okay, ready?
Just for clarification, you said sixty-five point eight per one thousand residents, which is double the rate of the state average?
Incident rate now, it's sixty-five point eight per one thou, per one hundred thousand residents.
One hundred thousand.
Sorry, sorry.
They drop it all the time.
Okay, it's like, oh, you got her wrong. Sorry, sorry. Per one hundred thousand residents, which is more than, the state incident rate is thirty point two.
We buy knock hand by the gallon.
We might knock hand by the gallon.
It's not as bad as I said it.
You're good?
What's up?
I'm good, yeah.
Personnel board.
All right. First item up is to appoint Derek as the public records clerk for the Board of Health, effective today.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? There is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is, kind of news to me, discuss position of soil board clerk. Apparently, we need a soil board clerk?
We do. Originally, it was Lauren from the planning board, she also second, doubled as the soil board clerk. She's no longer employed by the town, she moved on to bigger and better things, which leaves it vacant. We will be needing to do inspections, the soil board will need to be doing inspections relatively soon, I believe.
So, is Mike McKee before Lauren?
Must have been before, Lauren was the last.
Now, it was Nadine before Lauren, when Mike McKee called Nadine.
He had two clerks behind. Do we have recommendations from anyone, or?
Is it posted? All right, so I'll make a motion to post for the soil board clerk. I'd also reach out to the FinCom clerk and see if she wants to do it, maybe she wants to pick up some extra hours. I mean, we only meet twice a year, so it's not like a big deal, but you can ask her.
Basically, it's transcribe and stuff, so.
Right.
Okay, make a, I'll make a motion, oh, you made the motion, I'll second the motion, I'm sorry.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? There is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a change of status on employees to reflect the recent collective bargaining agreements. And I would love to hear a motion that we dispense with the reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of all the names and just refer to them as posted in the agenda, posted publicly on the agenda.
Second that. A motion made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, so.
I'll make a motion to approve all the retroactive changes statuses for town hall, library union, highway union, signal operators union, firefighters union, the union effective July first, twenty eighteen.
Second. Motion made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a change of status form for Ali Golz, on relation to the, what is that? No, for the change of position.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status form for Alexandra Golz, effective July first, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Motion made in second, hearing, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next would be letter of resignation on the police department reserve list. Joseph Cowing, I understand he's getting, he's got a full-time position in the town of Lakeville. Let's wind down our reserve list.
Do you know how many we have?
I believe it may be down to seven or eight.
Okay.
I believe we talked to the chief about running a new list, I know he's got an auxiliary list, we had talked about it.
Well, he, he's starting, starting a new auxiliary list.
Okay.
They're gonna have to go through the reserve training academy, which is now, who, four hundred hours. So, I'll, what?
I'll entertain, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Joseph Cowing's letter of resignation and send him a thank you letter.
Second.
A motion made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Is that it, Charlie?
That's it.
Okay. Moving on to the Board of Selectmen and Consent Agenda. Adopt other post-employment benefits declaration of trust submitted by Treasurer Jessica Thomas. Now, we talked about this in the past.
Yes, basically, the board or the townspeople voted to create the trust at the June town meeting. The trust document has been developed, there's a ninety-day waiting period, which is now up in, because the waiting period is an essential piece of it, because it gives people an opportunity to say, no, we don't want that. That, we had no disagreement to it, we're now ready to adopt the trust and start diversifying our investment portfolio with our consultant that we hired to help us do that, specifically for the OPEB, but potentially for other town funds such as the capital stabilization stabilization.
I'll entertain a motion for endorsement of the contract.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve signed schedule for new two thousand nineteen Chevrolet Tahoe and two thousand eighteen Dodge Durango Cruze lease.
Make a motion to approve and sign.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made in second to approve and sign the new Cruze leases, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss approve all snowplow contracts for two thousand eighteen, nineteen snow and ice season, see attached list for names of snowplow operation. I'll entertain a motion to, to waive the reading of the names.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second to re, to waive the reading of the names since it was posted online and public of all the names. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to the adoption and signing for the contracts.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? I have a discussion, have these gone through the process of being, made sure they have the right insurance, the registration?
Yeah, I'm checking them as they were.
All the requirements.
Thank you. They actually gave certificates of insurance, I believe.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Award five hundred removal replacement and replacement of fire station number two.
This was a project that was approved by town meeting. We had met, I talked to Kevin, I talked to the fire chief. We got a proposal in from JRD for, in the amount, I believe, of ninety-seven fifty to do the work, and we're ready to award that contract for the snowplow, so we can get it done.
That's nine thousand seven hundred.
I, I can check that out, it's, I, chief, would you know that?
Well, the lump sum is nine thousand.
The letter from the company with nine thousand.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, it is nine thousand, I'm sorry.
Approve the fire hydrant removal and replacement at a price of nine thousand dollars to JRD.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss town offices and transfer station hours for two thousand eighteen holiday season. Any discussion? Does it make you get to have a day off?
No, doesn't affect me very.
Well.
If the gates are open or closed, it affects you, it's a little slow when they're closed.
It doesn't matter if they're closed.
They just leave it out front.
They hot the fence. I get that swatcher.
What, it's a Tuesday, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, for, for the, well, are we gonna take those in order, Black Friday, November twenty-third? Right.
Well, this is for, well, it is for town offices and transfer station, okay. I think I read it's just transfer station, my apology. So, yeah, we'll take it right in order. Black Friday, Black Friday, November twenty-third, first. Does the board have a pleasure of how it wants to do it? Last year, town offices were closed on Black Friday, employees must use their time if they wish to have the day off. The transfer station last year operated as normal on the Friday. And highway department in two, in two thousand seventeen operated as normal on the Friday.
I would, I would suggest, well, I would recommend that we do it as we did last year. Because they are taking their own time off.
I'll make a motion to keep it the same as last year, or previous years.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to copy last year, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Holiday party, two thousand seventeen, the board allowed all offices to close at one PM on Tuesday, December nineteenth, for annual holiday party. Employees did not have to use their time for this day. If the board is willing to do the same this year, Ally suggests, Ally has suggested the date be of Tuesday, December eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
One PM Tuesday, December eighteenth?
Yes.
Motion made in second to approve Monday, December eighteenth, at one PM, for the employee holiday party. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, with the holidays following on Tuesday this year, the town is currently scheduled open, scheduled to open on the Monday, close on the Tuesday, reopen on the following Wednesday. Does the board want it open as regularly scheduled, following the same procedure as Black Friday, or go something completely different?
For New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve, I would make a motion to call, to close all town offices at one.
Okay, well, yeah, I was gonna say we could, we have a fourth day on Friday, but that might be like too complex.
I mean, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, I mean, no one, no one's gonna be doing anything really, so, and, you know what? I just say it's a, it's a holiday, so I would say all, all departments close at one.
Do I have a second?
I'll make that motion, second, whatever.
You made it and seconded it, you made the motion.
Thank you.
I have a motion made and seconded, and motioned and seconded again. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
We have a question.
If we're closing at one, would you be requiring employees to use time?
No.
No.
Then you said all offices, and departments?
Yes, yes, library, highway.
So, basically, just like the holiday.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
Now, the departments that open an hour earlier, you still get out at one, and you get out at twelve, so the hours are the same?
One.
One.
So, we're seven to get out at one, never get out at one, okay.
Uniform and screw. Just check if. So, motion made in second for one PM on Christmas Eve and, and New Year's Eve, any just further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Christmas Day and New Year's Day, offices are closed per CBA, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. So, those days are already closed because it's in the contract.
And you, if there wasn't, you'd make them come in.
Absolutely.
I knew it.
Discuss vote Department of Conservation intent to purchase six point six and twenty-four point seven acres of land abutting the Freetown State Forest.
We have a letter from DCR, they have been working with private owners to purchase two parcels, six point six and twenty-four point seven acres. One of the conditions is they have to give, state regulations allow the town, allow a hundred twenty-day notice period to be reduced or waived in agreement with public officials. Basically, what we're doing here is we would be waiving by agreement our intent to, to, you know, be involved in that sale.
We also have to sign off on the sale.
Yeah, you have to sign off, yeah.
All right, so, I'll entertain an initial motion to waive the hundred and twenty, twenty-day cool-off period that's required by state statute for the DCR Department of Conservation to purchase land and take it into the current state forest.
Where's the land? Where is the land?
We have a map.
It looks like it's landmarked.
It is.
Way up the elbow into Lakeville, Freetown, it's, so it's across the pipeline that runs from Slidridge Road to Carroll and Chase Road, landmark.
If you wanna see it, I can show you a picture of it, but.
Yeah, I have a picture of it.
It's just middle of nowhere land that's, it has nothing to do with us, we just, the statute makes, has, requires us to sign off for the, state wants to buy more land, put it in state forest, great. All right, motion made in second to, did we make a motion in second?
Yep.
Yes.
To second to waive the hundred and twenty days. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the, to sign the, sign off for the state to allow them to proceed with the purchase of the property. Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and Department of Fire, right, services regarding use of hazardous materials response team, as submitted by Fire Chief Gary Silver. Is Gary Silver in the building? What do we got, Gary?
The state wants to move one of the hazmat trucks into Freetown and put them on our fire stations. Basically, it's a state-owned vehicle, it's, it's registered to the state, it's, the custody, the patrol is to the town of Freetown. They maintain it, they fuel it, they take care of it, the only thing, the only downside for us is it's gonna take one of our apparatus base. We have an extra one, so it's not that good of a.
You put in a station two?
We're gonna, if you fit in a station two, but it's tight, then we're gonna start off here at headquarters, there's a lot more room, plus it's all over million-dollar equipment on it, they just didn't have it with the cameras on. Plus, it puts it uniquely in the middle of all the three cities around us, so.
Now, they're carrying the insurance waivers and all that stuff. If there's any hazardous materials spilled, not spilled, if there's any leaks or anything from the vehicle, they carry all that stuff.
The only thing we're responsible is if, if our people are grounded, we still cover them.
No, just to clarify, if there's a call, not necessarily one of our personnel units will operate.
Correct, the, the order is, the nearest hazmat tech will say he's gonna be on the truck, so posters guy was, guy from New Bedford, Freetown, Westport, whatever. If they cannot get, for some reason, the location time, whatever, then they'll call our fire alarm and then they'll dispatch the truck with our guys. But they'll cover what are the causes that occurs with our guys taking that.
But not every time, I thought every time. Because the, the problem has been that the truck hasn't been able to get out, out the door because of certain departments who have had control over it, not a lot we can face.
All right, I'll make a motion to sign memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Department of Fire Services regarding the use of hazardous materials response team.
That's kind of a good accent.
Hello.
Charlie?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign agreement with environmental partners.
You're good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Sign agreement with environmental partners group regarding a study for the Sonnet Sewer Extension. It's the study that was voted on at town meeting, that the state is funding thirty thousand of, and the town is funding, I believe, two thousand of.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with environmental partners.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign agreement with FNS Engineers for additional services of highway, at highway department, Faruk, perfect timing, Sarah. Come on down, you can come up front and just state your name and who you're representing.
Next one, Charlie. Hi, how are you?
Hi, thanks.
Just state your name and your affiliation, please.
My name is Faruk Siddiq, I'm with FNS Engineers, Environmental Consulting Fund. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the proposed works.
Okay, you, you did a study currently, you did a study at the highway, highway bond?
Yes, just recently, we did a study on the catch basin cleaning and the street sewer. Yes, just recently, we did a study on the catch basin cleaning and the street sweeping that were collected. And over the years, there was quite a significant quantity in there. And for, there are specific requirements for management of the catch basin cleanings and for street sweeping. And so, we needed to characterize the materials so that they could be disposed of properly. And so for that, we went to the site, looked at the material that was there. Material was commingled, so they needed to be addressed in, as catch basin cleaning as opposed to street sweeping only. And for that, they were supposed to go to the landfill. And they were, we analyzed them and results came back that they could be disposed of as, as unlined landfill cover material.
Is that your recommendation?
That was our recommendation, yes. And, and I don't think it goes to support that. So while we were doing that, just the next question, I think, while we were at the, at the facility, we were, we, we did a survey of the area where the street sweepings are and what other materials are. And, and we interviewed the folks at the maintenance garage, what they, how they operate things, what are their practices have been, how they collected the street sweepings and how, you know, how they got about it. And during discussion, you know, we saw there was a big pile of, um, street, uh, chip materials, that those were the stripping materials from the different locations. And the facility itself is managed in a way that, you know, they burn waste oil in there and, and so there were some questions about the practices itself ongoing over the, you know, since 1950 or '60, that the facility's been there. So there were some concerns regarding the practices and what it might have impacted soil and the groundwater. So based on that, we recommended that they do at least a baseline, to make the baseline, you know, to get a sense of what is there and what is not there. And this is basically for, you know, understanding and knowing the liability that the facility operator may have with the town. So that's, to support that, we put together a proposal.
This, that would involve soil sampling and groundwater.
And groundwater sampling, yeah. We proposed six borings within the facility and primarily targeted towards the locations that were told, you know, that may have some impact or, you know, within the, within the zone. So we targeted those areas, put the monitoring, and convert three of the six borings in the monitoring lots so that we can take the groundwater samples. The city, I think the town is in GW1 area, which everybody uses, uh, public, uh, private water well. So that becomes a concern. That's the reason why, you know, we have groundwater assessment.
Any questions from the board? So you raised your hand.
What promoted this study?
Okay, name, name and...
My name's Mark St. Laurent. I live at 13 Burns Lane. What promoted this study?
I believe he stated that when he did his interviews with the members there and went over the procedures he had concerns. Is that, is that what you...
Yeah.
He does a site inspection in addition to looking at the tube.
So how is the sweep, the street sweeping's gonna be dispersed of? How's that gonna be taken off the property?
Those will need to go to the landfill. So it's gonna be unlined landfill. So there are different kinds of landfills in the state where material goes to. Just stuff that is a little bit worse goes to lined landfill and stuff that is not as contaminated goes to unlined.
So what was the staying of that contamination? Was it contaminated?
It's street sweeping, which is basically the street, the catch basin cleanings, which is what?
You mean it's all washed away and...
Yeah, it's basically the trucks go by the road.
So are we paying to get rid of that?
Probably we need to, if there's a landfill.
Why can't, if we're gonna build a police station, why can't it be filled, put in?
There, the Massachusetts has very specific regulations and these are covered under the solid waste regulations. And solid waste regulation precludes that certain things cannot be used. We can go through the beneficial use program, but that, to qualify for the beneficial use program, the cost is quite high. And, you know, which is, which is basically, if you've got huge amounts of material and you want to reuse it someplace, there are ways of exploring that, but those require some significant amount of, of sampling, analysis, and may not be able to use it in a place where children play or nearby where children play. So there are, there are some restrictions where the, this is basically the state regulation.
I was wondering what promoted this whole inquiry on sweet sweeping to start with? What, what brought that up?
The street sweeping was a big pile in the facility that needed to move, that needed to go someplace, because they have to be moved every year. That's also...
So what happened last year? There was no testing of it last year, the year before?
No, we, we had a report from a source that we said that they were mixing the street sweepings, which are, which are okay to use as structural fill and you, okay to use, I shouldn't speak there. They are structural, they use the struct, that's not catch basin clean, no, street sweeping.
Street sweeping can be used along the right of way. Street right of ways, they can be used.
Right.
But they cannot...
So what are you talking about? Catch basin?
They took catch basin and mixed it with street sweeping.
So once, once it's mixed, then, then it cannot be.
So if they were segregated, they could be used, the, the street sweepings could be used for other things.
So everybody that went for the, you know, catch basin truck driving had no training on what to do with the product after it came out of the ground?
No. So our recommendation has, you know, in there is that they need to segregate them.
Yeah, yeah.
Onwards, so that, so that...
No, I'm just saying the guys that run the truck, they had no training on what to do with that.
To answer your question, Mark, the operators of the truck are directed by the Highway Surveyor what to do with the material. They don't make a decision. So the, the sweepings and the catch basin material were piled together under the direction of the Highway Surveyor.
But was there any ruling from the state that wrote, you know, sent something down that said, hey, you can't mix this up?
Yes.
I'm saying how that came about, what it was.
You are allowed to mix it. You just can't use it as structural fill. If you mix it, you have to send it to a landfill is what Mr. Farooq is saying.
So, so the street, the street sweepings could be used for...
Separate.
Separately, for material.
But not, but not catch basin?
But not catch basin. Everything from a catch basin is supposed to go to a landfill.
Alright.
Okay, right of way.
I'm Gary Mendy, Chase Ruts. You're gonna do a core sample and plug the hole up right away, right?
Yes.
So you're not gonna be having a pipe open and anybody can throw things in?
Oh, no, there's gonna be three wells, but they will have caps and they'll have bolts on it, so that they will be...
Who's gonna have the key?
No, the, the three, those three will be...
You know, you can't say that. Are you planning going for them, things down?
No, no.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm absolutely sure.
Alright.
Usually, usually they are made, you know, with a concrete pad and then the casing goes in and then we've got expansion plug. And that has a facility you can put a, put a lock in there. Usually, you know, because it's bolted on top, so...
Who do you think you're gonna find when you do this?
We hope not to find anything.
Well, I hope so too. It's gonna cost the town millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's the hope that, you know, that there's nothing there, but that's what set the baseline.
I mean, there's other places in town that have...
Yeah, Conquins loaded with pollutants.
15 acres.
Do you know that for a fact? Can you tell me, tell us where?
I know it for a fact, I worked there.
Put in a thing showing us where it is and we'll, if we, if we can look into, we don't own that property, maybe the owner's might wanna look for it.
It's probably 10 to 15 acres.
The town property that does own this, it was brought to our attention, we wanna make sure it's taken care of as safely as possible for the public sector.
Cause that's like...
Public health public.
Zinc oxide and nickel catalysts, if you wanna look it up.
I have no idea what that is, so.
Okay.
These people that were sitting here earlier might be interested in that. You could, you should have...
Oh, they're all there?
No, they left.
Churchill and...
Those sort of people?
Churchill and...
Any other discussion on that?
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with FNS Engineers for the additional services at the Highway Department.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign special town election warrant as submitted by Jacqueline Brown, Town Clerk. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve agreement between the Freetown and Lakeville for the use of the Lakeville Animal Shelter.
There's been no changes to the agreement, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Lisa Podolski said it's good to go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve order selection minutes for meetings, October 15th and October 20th, 2018. Have you had the chance to review the minutes?
I have.
Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
Alright, I'll present a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as next.
For October 15th and 20th?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the motion minutes for October 15th and October 20th, 2018. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Update the one called Citizens Notification System. We got an update on that.
We have a total of 317. I actually just put in about four or five more today, so right around there. People that have signed up, 132 are to receive text messages, 185 received just a phone call. Any of those people that get just the phone call can switch to a text message by texting the word ALERT to 22300 from the phone number that gets the calls. To this point, we've sent out three alerts. We'll be sending out a fourth this week for the special town meeting on November 14th and then probably another later in the month for the special town election. And we were discussing earlier that we've made, made sign out two for the special town meeting.
Looking at the day before?
One this week, one next week. All of the calls are recorded by me because we decided that the computer voice we plan on using was too creepy, so.
And you're not?
I guess not. I got the reviews, I'm not.
You have a voiceover.
And at this point, we've utilized 1,446 of the 60,000 purchased credits, which was, was appropriate at the town meeting. And a credit is used every time we send out a text or make a phone call to a contact. So this includes when we send out the original call urging residents to text 22300, so I haven't been doing that. Let's try to deserve the credits. And those unused credits will roll over to the next year if we renew contracts with them in June or July.
So, I still think that this number is really low considering, and I think it's just the way we get the word out and perhaps when we do the debt exclusion ballot, we have like a, not a postcard, but maybe just a little piece of paper that they can take with them to know how to sign up for it, that they can just grab and just, so then that way they'll have it, the instructions will be right there and they can take it with them, so.
And we did put out the paper to sign up.
The easiest way to do is just text, what's the number?
22300, but you still need to have me put the numbers into the system for that to work.
And we have it on the website?
Yes.
And Facebook page of how to, how to sign up for it?
Yep.
So please, sign up. It's a valuable resource. It's there, let's use it. Okay. Town administrator's report.
Okay, the power hasn't been installed at the schoolhouse. We have, well, they haven't been connected through other source, but all the, the wiring has been connected. We are an outdoor light. And we will have electricity in the building, so we will be able to use the building for records. Particularly at night in this time of year when people have to go in and look. We're working on the door and all the windows have the new weights on them, so we're finishing up that project. I put together an RFP for solar, I'm hoping to be at the landfill. It's gonna be based, basically on the, on a strict lease of the land. Hoping to have that out in the next couple weeks. I did explore the whole possibility of methane and methane generating RFP. However, I've been talking to the board to help. We're generating so little methane at the site at this point that there's really no value in even going through the exercise of trying to see if a vendor would be interested in using the land for that purpose.
I have a question. Are we developing a pilot with that or...
No, I'm expecting them to do, pay the full taxes, just like...
Okay.
As is our practice. In fact, that was taken out in, in the, in the document when it was put together. We have an RFP put together for the generator for the town hall. We have the pad in. We've been talking to the electrician about, you know, just basically coordinating the activities between putting the propane tank in, the purchasing the generator and then putting the transfer switch in. We're still debating the, the full town hall generator versus a smaller unit that would power just a number of offices, our data center, the heat and that kind of thing. There's some considerations in there in terms of the larger unit requiring three-vay's power and the cost that might be associated with that and, and the cost efficiencies of running a smaller generator and the savings that would be involved in that. So as we get closer to that, I'll let the board know what direction, unless the board has an opinion on which they feel would be better, but...
No, you're also...
Let's go with this from this point, if you want to...
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote on it, but I, I just like to...
No, I'm not saying...
No, no, no.
Do you have any objections to doing a smaller or...
No, I, I would prefer to do a smaller one rather than a larger one. I don't, I don't, I don't see people really, I wanna keep the town hall warm. I wanna make sure the pipes don't burst and things like that, but I don't, I don't see people working in, while the generator's on, so.
Okay, so the smaller unit probably would be the problem.
I would concur with that.
Okay. I'm gonna be attending the OSHA 10 training on Thursday with the Fire Chief as well as the Highway Superintendent in Duxbury. It's training that's relative to the new implementation of OSHA in February. I got an email from the school department about the Freetown Elementary School. They're the need for a, they have a hot water boiler. We're gonna, I'm gonna be talking to Kim. They had, they had estimated the cost of the repairs of the boiler would be $12,004.18. The low quote for the replacement on the boiler is $13,500. However, when I talked to Ashley Loops, the business manager over at the school, they feel that the repair is not the best option, that given the extra $1,000, they're not convinced that the repairs are gonna be a, a long-term solution. We may end up having to purchase one anyway. So I will be working on that and I'll update the board as we get closer to figuring out how we're gonna do that, how we're gonna pay for it. We, we are installing a new oil tank in the Freetown Library in the Sonnet. There were holes in the tank. It was leaking. And we're, so we're putting a hole in the tank in there and we have a company already working on that. And finally, I've been working with Andy DeGamo on the specifications for the permanent freezer here at the Council on Aging. It's gonna tie into the kitchen. There's a whole bunch of trades that are involved. That's why I brought Andy on board to help us develop the spec where it involves carpeting, it involves concrete work, it involves changing some structural parts of the building. So we, we, you know, as a matter of being cautious, we, we're gonna use his services to make sure we get what we're looking to get from that project. And that's all gonna hopefully happen within the, the next month or two. So that's basically it. I am going to a managers' conference the week after next, for Thursday and half of Friday, so I will be out in the air first. That's a region, that's not the region with the State Managers, Managers Association, MMA.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Can we please, on the next agenda, pilots versus taxes for solar, because it's come up a thousand more times already?
Yep, and I actually tracked that, believe it or not. I actually called the state senator, I called the state rep. It, it got through the state senate, but it got hung up in conference committee on the state, in the, in the House of Representatives. The MMA, which I have a contact there, they're advocating, you know, that, that we, the taxation versus the pilot, and they've been advocating for the language in terms of the legislation. But we're hoping in the fall that the House is gonna bring it up and that we're gonna be successful in getting that done. So that's on my radar. I'm monitoring that. I periodically call.
So I think we should just put it on for the next agenda and bring everybody up to speed on it and put it in a packet, because I would hate for us, the towns, we have so many solar arrays in town that I would hate for us to lose out on any dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah, anything else?
So, I'm done.
Okay.
Lastly, on the agenda is, the consent agenda is acknowledgement of receipt of Excel application for operations. We are in receipt of an application for renewal, not renewal, a reissuance of the license for Renell's, Excel's recycling, secondhand merchandise licensed for 17 Ridge Hill Road. Renell's, Excel's recycling secondhand merchandise license for seventeen Ridge Hill Road. The council asked us to acknowledge it publicly. We are doing that at this point. We are going to set up a meeting, probably similar to the last meeting we had, where it will be a similar format. We'll ask from comments from Excel, we'll ask from comments from the, um, surrounding neighbors, anybody, any objections they might have, and then we will close the public portion of it. It is a selectman's meeting, it's not a public hearing, they're not required to have a public hearing on, for the secondhand merchandise license. So it'll be a, so it's a selectman's meeting, just like we did last time, it'll probably be at the elementary school if we can get it. I need some dates though, if we have dates that we are available to do that. Now, we have an issue with council on a couple of dates?
Uh, we do. Um, I have an email from council. Uh, they, uh, they're available any night, uh, on the week of the twenty-sixth except for Tuesday, so that the Tuesday's the twenty-seventh, so they can do, do it Monday, the twenty-sixth, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, Thursday, the twenty-ninth. And they're also.
Does that be your schedule?
Uh, Monday, the twenty-sixth?
That's fine with me. Monday, the twenty-sixth works for them.
Okay.
So we'll have the meeting on Monday, the twenty-sixth, and then if we, we can, we'll vote that night. If not, we can deliberate in that night, but if it goes too long, do you have a second date just to deliberate and, um, vote?
Uh, do you want to do it at our regularly scheduled meeting or do you want to do it, what's our?
Sooner rather than later because it's.
So, yeah, so Monday, December third is, um, so a week, a week later.
Do you want to go that long? Do you want to go like the next day? What, what's the, what's the year?
Twenty-sixth is a Monday, twenty-seventh is a Tuesday, twenty-eighth is a Wednesday.
And they, they can't do it the?
The twenty-seventh.
They can't do the Tuesday.
Twenty-seventh.
I, yeah, the twenty-eighth, I guess.
Uh, if it's needed, depending on how long it goes at night.
Okay.
If it goes too long, then we'll just hold it over to the twenty-eighth. Um, and we should know for agenda wise whether we need it on that twenty. We'd better do it the twenty-ninth, so if we need it, we can, oh, we.
I would, yeah, if we're going to do the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, I'd have to post both at the same time.
Yeah.
Cancel the second.
So what about the twenty-ninth? Can we do the twenty-ninth? That way we don't have to post it until the next day if we need it.
Okay.
It's forty-eight dollars.
Yeah, I know that. I'm like, what's the big deal, just.
Post it and just not have it?
Yeah, if you, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So you want the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth?
Get rid of it, yeah. Twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, yeah.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth.
Um, do we have to do, um, an inspection or do we have?
They, uh, they also addressed that in the letter that, um, they, they're recommending that an inspection be done, uh, Excel's proposing three dates, eleven, seven, fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen, actually four days, um, just to, uh, uh, look at the newly installed sound mitigation, et cetera.
Okay, A, number one, I'm not going to, I have a lot going on, so I'm not going to, um, make my schedule around Excel. Excel's going to make their schedule around me or, or the board. That's number one.
I'll make it around you.
Thank you.
I'm not advocating that.
No, 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 and this recommendation is not coming from you, it's actually coming from council.
Council.
So we're following everything that council is telling us to do, but I, again, I'm not going to make my schedule around Excel and telling me that you can go on these dates. So what is your availability?
I have a meeting on November, Tuesday, November thirteenth, looking my next meeting for, for the planning board.
Is that right?
No.
Why is that?
Oh, because the election is tomorrow. So you have the thirteenth, I won't be able to do the thirteenth. Anything else? It'll probably be during the day anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're not required to do that. It's only, we're allowed to do it.
So you're right, we're not required to do it, but I don't want anything to be held against us, should we not have, not do it. So I'm going to do everything that, so far, we have been doing everything that council's told us to do and we've been winning, okay? And I just want to, I'm not, I'm not angry, I'm just saying like, we followed everything that, strict.
But this is only to the, when, when I discussed anything from past litigation, I think this is only pertaining to this, to this.
No, so be it. He wants us, council says he thinks it's a good idea that we go and go look at it. Got a new wall, okay, I'll go look at it. So I, my problem is, is that I'm not available on the fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth of November.
Why don't we refer to council, see when they're available to do a walkthrough during the day if they want.
Are they going to come with us?
I, I want to present, want to request in that some, they come and possibly a, it's an argument.
Okay, so just.
So why don't we go look, set that date until we get back in the public.
That's fine, just so you know, I'm not available the fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth.
Fifteenth through the seventeenth. Okay.
And we should follow this application on to any other department that requires it.
I actually have followed it on to the building inspector, just.
Okay, so.
So that's about it.
Do, do we need to make a motion that we acknowledge a receipt of that? I'll do that, just in case.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, um, acknowledge a receipt of the, um, Excel application.
Second motion.
I, I don't think I can.
No.
Not second.
I'll second, I'll second. And you are abstaining from this conversation?
Uh, I guess I might recuse myself from being further.
Discussion, there you go.
We're not talking about it anymore.
So a motion made and seconded, please let the, uh, minutes reflect that. Uh, Mr. Sullivan has recused himself from, from the hearing and the procedure. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We acknowledge the receipt of Excel's oper, uh, application for operation. Um, new business.
Back to the Excel. This is Ellen Lima on the, on the forty-one High Street in Sommet.
Hi, don't need the camera. I, just being part and partial to the previous, um, some of the previous business and listening to the, um, the engineer from FS, just curious where he said the reason it's being done is liability, you know, concerning the materials that were deposited behind the town barn, et cetera. I mean, we have liability all over the place with what Excel's got all over the ground over there and the groundwaters and just could the, could it be a possibility that that town could be, you know, forward thinking and having some engineering studies done there? Is it not possible?
We can't speak to that here because that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
However, I can, can speak to what happened over there because that was on the agenda. The re, that was town property.
Okay.
And we had a re, uh, report from someone that there was some contamination possibilities there with the catch basin cleanouts being mixed with the, um, street sweepings. That's why we engaged F and S engineering to go sort it out and come up with a plan. They did, they told us what we can do with that stuff, um, and where, what, what proceedings. The next step, why it was on the agenda tonight was because during that process, they came across, um, some concerns that they had, other concerns that they had with possible disposals and stuff. So that's why he wanted to expand the scope, he came in front of us to, tonight to explain that, and we went down that, that, that path with them, the, the boards voted to go down that path and make sure everybody's safe, that there's no public safety issue there. Um, as far as them, they're being private citizens and junk handle is licensed, that's something that we can discuss that night, but here now, it's not on the agenda. It's just the acknowledging the application is on the agenda, so that's what we did.
Just knowing that there's been groundwater contamination problems in East Free Town, in the Sommet, um, and some of the, where some of these waters are draining into, I[1652.83]